I'd like to bring this meeting of the school committee to order and ask all of you to join with me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everybody in attendance here tonight and thank you for coming. I also want to welcome our viewers on television. The first item on our agenda is to receive comments. Is there anybody attending tonight's meeting who isn't already on the agenda who would like to speak to the school committee? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands in the audience, so I'm going to move along from our student representatives. We'll start with North.
Thank you. The AP exams begin today and will continue through Friday, May 17th. Please check the website for specific dates and times. PNHS graduation will be held on Saturday, June 1st. Plymouth North has the morning graduation this year, which will begin at 9:30 a.m. This event will be held on Plymouth North High School's football field. In the event of inclement weather, the ceremony will take place inside the gymnasium. Upcoming events for seniors. Senior Fest is May 15th. The senior final exams are Monday, May 20th through Thursday, May 23rd. Makeup exams will be Friday, May 24th. Hypnotist Night is May 22nd. Last day of classes is May 23rd. Class Day is May 24th. Graduation Practice is May 28th. Dinner Dance is May 28th. Another graduation practice is May 30th. And Convocation is May 30th. And the two graduation practices are mandatory. The 5th Annual MT Bulls will take place on Thursday, May 9th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Plymouth North High School. The cost is $10 per person. Enjoy a meal of soup and bread with live entertainment and a silent auction. The junior prom will be held on Friday, May 17th, at the Indian Pond Country Club from 6:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. Please make sure to check your students' Aspen account to get the most current academic standing. Math MCAS for grade 10 will be held on Tuesday, May 21st and Wednesday, May 22nd. Attention juniors attending prom on Friday, May 17th. Permission slips for early dismissal on prom day are now available to pick up in Student Services. Please fill them out and have your parents sign. All completed forms are due to Student Services by Friday, May 10th. On Thursday, May 2nd, the students from the Technology and Vocational Programs offered at North showcased their projects in the cafeteria at Plymouth North High School. The event was a huge success, allowing the students to present what they had accomplished throughout their four years in the Vocational Tech Program. Next week, May 13th through May 17th, will be Speak Week. I don't know if it's Speak the Word or S.P. or the acronym. And it's about kindness, showing kindness, noticing kindness, sharing kindness, and encouraging kindness. Speak Week stands for Stand Up, Stay Strong, Stand Together, Pay It Forward, Encourage One Another, Advocate for Change, and Kindness Starts with One. During advisories this week, students will participate in activities revolving around acts of kindness. The Patriot League Scholar Athletic Dinner will be held in Hingham on Tuesday. Two students from Plymouth North were invited to attend. Congratulations to Sadie Fostick and Aidan Campbell for being named Patriot League Scholar Athletes from Plymouth North. On Wednesday, May 8th, the junior class will be attending a presentation called Taylor's Message during a school assembly. This presentation is facilitated by both Kathy and Chris Sullivan with the goal of delivering a message of hope, love, and a newfound power for students to deal with peer pressure, tough choices they face every day. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that report. And now we'll go to South.
Hi, guys. Today's going to be my last meeting because unfortunately I cannot attend the next meeting, but I just want to say thank you to everybody for the past two years. It's been a wonderful, wonderful experience. And I wrote you guys a little card and I hope you guys got the chance to read it. All right, so for the last time, congratulations to the students and staff of the Plymouth South High School Theater Guild. Their performance of the musical Anything Goes is a huge hit. Set design, costumes, acting, singing, dancing, and of course, the pit were phenomenal. We are very proud of these students and all of our staff. Our 2019 AP exams began today and will take place through May 17th at St. Bonaventures. It's off-campus for a quiet testing environment with no distractions. Our senior final exam schedule, as well as the end of the year final exam schedule for underclassmen, has been shared with all staff, students, and parents. And the 2019 CCTE Senior Showcase will take place tomorrow night on May 7th at 7 o'clock in the cafeteria. You can come see all the amazing projects our senior technical studies students have been working on throughout the years. Our junior prom assembly will have a special presentation, as well as Plymouth North, of Taylor's Story on May 8th at 9:30 a.m. Taylor's mother shares a story of the death of her daughter on prom night due to alcohol consumption. In addition, an evening portion is being sponsored by PYDV at the Spire Center downtown at 6 o'clock. The Plymouth South High School Spring Choral Concert will take place May 8th at 7 o'clock. And the Plymouth South High School Junior Prom is May 10th at 6:00 p.m. at Indian Pond Country Club. If any of you are going, I'll see you there. Our student council raised over $450 for the Walk of Hunger in Boston. Members walked five miles in support of this wonderful fundraiser. And our annual Top 10 Breakfast will take place May 16th at 8:00 a.m. at Southside Fair. This is one of the best events of the year, as we recognize our top 10 seniors in the class of 2019. Our Athletic Senior Award Nights will take place on Sunday, May 19th at 6:00 p.m. And over 100 senior athletes will be recognized for their commitment to athletics at Plymouth South. We want to congratulate our Skills USA competitors who earned medals last week at the state competition at Blackstone Valley Tech. Bronze medals were won by Tyler Beatty with job interview plumbing, Sam Gray for early childhood education. Silver medals are won by Jessica Johnson for auto refinishing, Lexi Holmes and Liz Kavanaugh for cosmetology. And for our gold medals, we have Abby Fernandez with commercial baking. And Maria Baker was elected to a second term as a Skills USA Massachusetts State Officer. Plymouth South High School and the Massachusetts State Track Coaches Association hosted over 900 athletes this past weekend at the freshman and sophomore invitational meet. We want to thank the coaches, athletes, parents, and administration for making it all an excellent event. And finally, on Friday and Saturday, Alex Godfrey, Melina Maynek, and Julianne Morris participated in the Massachusetts Science and Engineering Fair at Massachusetts Institute of Technology. Mila Maynek, mentored by Ms. Conroy and Ms. Dunn, earned honorable mention for her project. She also received a cash prize from the Cabot Foundation and awards from MIT Press and Harvard. In addition, she was the alternate winner of the Wentworth Institute of Technology $10,000 scholarship.
Let me say that you thanked us, but really it should be the other way around because both of you, both of you bring a great deal of information that we wouldn't have access to, so that's really appreciated. But in addition to that, there have been times when we needed your opinions and your thinking on topics, and that was very valuable to us. So we thank you for all the time you've spent here. Thank you very much.
And another thing too, and I know, I don't know if I've had a chance to talk to Eddie yet, but I talked to Isabella, that we're hoping maybe, starting next year, as a region, as a school committee region, of doing some kind of a convening for the students to get together and hash out some hot topics. And I know that I talked to you about it Bella, about, you know, if it was too late maybe to squeeze it in this year, and we kind of figured it would be. So I'm hoping that maybe you guys can come back and visit us next year if we do it.
Of course.
I think we're maybe even looking at doing it as more of like an orientation for the beginning of the school year, getting all the students together, similar to like a roundtable discussion that they do at the conference. So we'll make sure that we get you back here because you guys did a great job for the last couple of years, and I'm sure you'd be a great resource for the new ones coming in.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to be close anyways. If I come home, my mom will buy me stuff for my dorm, so.
Moving on. Our first presentation this evening is School Improvement Plan. Dr. Maestis.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have the School Improvement Plan from Indian Brook Elementary School. And we have Principal Erica Manfredi, along with Assistant Principal and team. So Erica, if you wouldn't mind introducing everyone, we have Courtney Trifletti as Assistant Principal. And we have a number of people that our committee have seen at the table before and well-known around Plymouth. So Erica, if you could just announce your team.
Thank you for taking the time to listen to us this evening. Let me introduce everyone. I'm Courtney Trifletti, Assistant Principal. Susan Page is our community representative that's on our committee. Jill Duggan is a grade four classroom teacher. And Nancy Canducci is a grade five classroom teacher. We are missing our two parent members, Lisa Di Biassio and Grace Spencer. They were unable to attend this evening. So, thank you for having us. Okay, am I flipping my slides? All right. So let me start by saying, you know, as we sat down, we reviewed the district's strategic plan for probably the 100th time. And, you know, it was really important for us to align as closely as we could. Clearly makes sense. So our three areas that we wanted to focus on were social and emotional growth of students, family and community engagement, as well as academic achievement. Those are in no order. They're all equally as important. So I'm going to pass it along. Jill's going to start and talk about our first strategic objective, social-emotional.
Good evening. The first, our first goal is, goes along right along.
Jill, you want to hold that microphone? There's one right front of you. Thank you.
Does it just?
Well, that's mostly the cable, so you won't hear the, you won't hear a speaker.
Wow.
It all works.
So our first objective goes right along with social-emotional growth. It is to create a safe and supportive environment that allows students to become independent problem solvers and productive members of the school community. Some of the things that we have done over the course of the year and previous years, this was our first year with the Second Step Curriculum across all grade levels. We have been partnering with Gosnold Counseling Services. We have been doing PBIS assemblies. This year, we did grade level assemblies, which was very, very effective. They were small and they really were able to incorporate a lot of student interaction within the assemblies. We also instituted Splash Awards to go along with our assemblies. We have a Peer Helper Program, as well as a Big Friend, Little Friends Program, and 5th grade kindergarten bus helper programs. Those are all kind of ways to have the older and younger students get to know each other and be supportive throughout the building. We also have an OT sensory path that was new this year. And the OT person in our school has done a great job. She has all kinds of interesting things to engage students if they just need a couple of minutes to gather themselves, or to refocus, or to expend some energy. It's great to kind of have a little bit of downtime with that path. Some things that we would like to do going forward, next year, we're going to administer and analyze the data of the SEL Universal Screener. We are also going to continue with school-wide PBIS program, as well as the Second Step Program. We will be developing professional learning communities focused on more RTI options and professional development focused on social-emotional learning. And these are the new matrices that we, excuse me, have put around the building. The darker blue is for grades K through 2, and the one on the right is for the older students. They have the basic principle of pride, performance, and power, just how we expect our students to reach those goals.
I've drawn some pictures for you. So I'm going to pass it along to, Nancy and Sue are going to share strategic objective two.
So I'm going to start. This strategic objective two is to increase family and community engagement. This is a goal that we've had for the last few years, so we've already done a lot of things in this. And this is to develop a clear line of communication between families and the larger school community, while also fostering a collaborative approach between the school, families, and surrounding communities. We have a very strong relationship with our PTA. They did a fun run with our school this year that raised a lot of money for the kids and our building. We are working on making our outdoor classroom even better and improving our Emily's Garden. We already have a lot of communication initiatives in place. We've got the smores newsletter that comes out from the office. They also post on social media, and we have a Facebook page and Twitter updates. We also use the connected phone calls. The lower grades use the, I think it's kindergarten, right? Kindergarten uses Seesaw, and that's, it's a computer program that the parents can get an app, and it's a means of communication. They can send pictures of their students, and they can also put updates like it's Patriots' Day tomorrow. Class Dojo is the same kind of thing that the upper grades use, and it's great for giving little, you know, reminders and also some pictures, because don't parents love those? We've done a lot of school-wide events. We just did our literacy night, which was culminating our One School, One Book Program. We did Charlotte's Web, just in case you didn't notice that. This fall, we did another one of our science nights, and we had our holiday fair and guest readers. Ed TV is a part of our school with the 5th graders joining in, and a robotics program is also a part of our school. We had a dodgeball tournament, which is a huge hit with the children, not so much the teachers, but the kids love it. We had, of course, our band, orchestra, chorus concerts. And then our chorus actually sung at the Providence Bruins. How cool is that? We had the Plymouth High School, this is the South, right? We only have South coming to read to us, right?
Yes.
Yeah. It's, so we have South High coming to read to the children just before Thanksgiving. And then we've got lots of spirit days during the year to just get the kids involved. We've got a play coming up this week. When is our play? Thursday night, yes. Come and see. Charlotte's Web. It's a theme. It's a theme. And then our 5th grade is going to have a carnival and a faculty basketball game. Ooh, another good one. Can't wait. It's going to be awesome.
Oh, do I use this one? It's up to you. What's this? I'll use this one. Now, throughout the upcoming school year, the implementation of Goal 3, to increase communication between the school and our parents. First, the classroom teachers will communicate with the parents weekly, bi-weekly, monthly, using whatever tool they're comfortable with, a newsletter, webpage, or email. A new part is, secondly, the specialists will also communicate with parents on a monthly basis, again, using whatever communication tool they feel comfortable with, to inform parents about the grade level expectations and curriculum in their specialist areas. Thirdly, at open house in the fall, parents will be introduced to the scope and sequence of curriculum areas at each grade level, as well as our PBIS matrices. Also at that night, parents will receive a trifold type of document outlining the scope and sequence presentation that they can have at home and refer to. And if they have a question, say at conference time or whatever, they can come and bring it and point to it and say, how does this match up with this? Now finally, in the spring of 2020, parents will complete a survey on the success of all these communication tools. And adjustments, if needed, can be made from the results of that survey.
Thank you so much. So I'll be talking, oh, great, those photos. So I'll be talking about objective number three, to enhance the academic achievement of all students, which is providing a high-quality instruction across all content areas that promote independent strategic learners and prepare students to meet their expanding goals of the 21st century. So some of the ways that we have already done this is, as Nancy mentioned earlier, our One Book, One School, Charlotte's Web this year. In addition, we have administered the grade level math assessments to identify students for intervention, as well as the Bass reading assessments. We will meet as, we will continue to meet with child study teams to analyze these results. Going forward, we will continue with professional development and school-wide programs for teacher collaboration. And then although our plan is to enhance all academic areas, our focus next year is science across all grade levels. Some of the things we will put into place is grade level professional development, focusing on effectively implementing the next-generation science standards. We will also be looking at forming professional learning communities focused on creating a next-generation K through 5 science standards vertical alignment document. Also, administrators will continue to conduct at least one administrative walkthrough during a science lesson. More pictures.
The middle one of Mr. Trifletti in the costume, I was hoping she'd wear it tonight, but we decided maybe not on our first one, maybe next year. The last thing, and I don't think I'm going to be able to do it, I was hoping to show our Charlotte's Web video, and I don't think I have the link correctly, but if you haven't seen it, Ed TV did a great little piece on our Charlotte's, our One School, One Book Day with a whole montage of kind of everything, all the craziness that was going on, including Gary holding a pig.
We saw that picture.
Holding over. So do you have any questions for us?
We might. Let's see. Ms. Hunt?
I like, I like your presentation. It's nice and concise and it's good. I really, really like the communication plan because a lot of schools will come to us and say, one of their goals is to communicate with more parents, but you actually marked it out. You know, they have to do it this many times and they're, I think that that's awesome because I know that everybody wants to do it, but it seems like you've got it actually structured out as to when and how to do it. So that's great.
That's the plan. I know for myself, I need to have a schedule or it's not going to happen.
Good. Thank you.
Good presentation. Covered a lot. Excellent. The other, the other slide, not slide, the other, I guess, handout that we received called details. I want to, I was reading through that. I like the outcome measures. I, and I thought your, your goals were pretty, were pretty bold, in a good way. For example, on the SEL measure, you going, you wrote that 10% of the students showed a need in that area, and you want to reduce that, that 10% by 20%. So it made me wonder, because I don't even know what this instrument looks like, this SEL instrument looks like. It made me wonder, many of the reasons that those childrens are in need have nothing to do with what happens during the day. They come to school with those problems. So I thought it was pretty courageous of you to feel that you could, and I mean this in the nicest way, to reduce the need by 10% when a lot of the problems are happening outside the school building.
I think we all think though, yes, there's not much you can do. You know, there are things we can do to support families. We have our backpack program where we send food home. Gosnold has been a huge support with connecting us to some of those families and their needs. But I think the, when they come to school, it needs to be a safe nurturing place. And we have seen such a difference in kids if they feel safe when they come to school. So regardless of what's going on at home, yeah, we can't fix that. We can teach them the coping strategies in school. And that's, that's what we really try and do.
I think that's, that's well said. I have never seen this instrument, this SEL instrument. I'm really curious to what types of questions are on it. So at some point, I'd like to see a copy of that, because I want to see it is what you're dealing with, what you're trying to work on. So maybe somebody can get that to me. Any other questions or comments? Okay, that was great. Thank you very much. Okay, now we have a status report from the Parents Advisory Council for Special Education. Dr. Maestis?
Yes, tonight, we have a report from the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, and I'd like to invite them to the table tonight. I know they have been very active, and we did have the CPAC here last year, and they are here to report on their activities. And they've supplied a PowerPoint presentation for tonight, and they will be walking through that for us.
Good evening and welcome. Glad you're here this evening.
Thank you for having us. We need to continue.
Yes, that's the one you need. Use that microphone.
We were just wondering to change slides. Is it?
Yes, so on that remote, there's a right arrow. You click the right arrow and it'll advance.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
You need to hold that microphone as you speak. That's for the TV.
Thanks. So thank you for having us. We are Plymouth CPAC, Special Education Parent Advisory Council. Some of you, we have had the pleasure of speaking with already, but for those that haven't, my name is Lindsay Quintle-Mackenroe, Amy Tenberg, and Jenna Quigley. We are all board members. We are a parent-led volunteer group, but we are state-mandated. And since being on the board, we have really worked to serve as a liaison between parents in the district and administration. We hear a lot of outreach from parents, problems, concerns, and we, we hear them out. We do our best to train parents and empower them, but also, we want to take it a step further and communicate those needs and those problem areas to administration. Sorry. Yes, thank you. So I already touched on that a little bit, but, oh, I'm so sorry. The second one is Jenna. Excuse me.
Hi. So we talked a little bit about who we are. I just wanted to talk about how maybe the board of the district can help us be successful. So I think one of, what we currently do, it might be helpful for you to know that, is we meet monthly with the parents from the district. So we have a monthly meeting, and then we take that information and we meet with the head of the district, Stacy, and we talk about, you know, opportunities for improvement, programs, things like that. We have a pretty strong web presence right now. We've just beeped it up a little bit. We have a new website. We use Facebook a lot to communicate with our parents. We attend all the open houses in the new year to try to get parents to know that we're around and available as a resource. But I think even with all of that, we fall short in the visibility area, and that's, I think, where we're asking for help from the district. You know, just a quick personal story. I moved here three years ago. I was struggling with the transition. My son's in the ASD program. I searched and searched, and I stumbled upon these ladies, thankfully, that helped me through a lot of navigating this difficult process that's special education. And I think it would have been really helpful to get this pamphlet when I joined the school district to say, hey, this is a resource for you as a parent and as, you know, just a person in the community that may be struggling with this tricky process. So I think our ask for, from you guys and from the district, is just help with that visibility and letting parents of, you know, with any need. I think we service all the children with any kind of different education path. So not just specifically kids on an IEP, but any parent know that we're here and we have some resources available to them. So we have guided parents and assisted them through navigating the special education process. A few of the topics we have discussed during parent meetings this year are MCAS, MCAS supports, how to implement those, how to individualize them. We focused a lot on the idea that it's important to really look at the whole child, not just academic performance, but social skills, ADLs, transition skills, which are all important. We have a lot of parents that reach out to us the night before an IEP meeting in a panic. So the idea behind parent empowerment is we want to prepare them ahead of time, before it gets into a crisis-type situation. So these themes here that you see on this slide are things that we have worked on all year. We would like to continue to work on them. We would welcome the district's involvement in helping us to provide parent training meetings. We do have Jerry Thassell doing a social thinking presentation for us next. We would like to delve into that area a little bit more because I think parent training, from what we have heard, what we have seen, is definitely an area that could help improve
Transportation. I know it might seem strange to have a
Transportation, I know it might seem strange to have a whole piece dedicated to this, but a major change that has resulted in a lot of our parent feedback is the transition from JuddCo to Vanpool for student transportation. That's a big, big change that happened. And at the beginning of that transition, we did, CPAC did host Vanpool at the time to give them a chance to speak to parents, address concerns, et cetera. We hoped for a relatively seamless transition, but unfortunately, transportation issues are some of the most common parent complaints that we see right now. While the process of driving students from home to school and back might seem simple on the surface, it really does require some acknowledgement of how unique the needs of those kids are, and what an important role the drivers and the staff members play. As you can see from the quote, you know, they, they're, they open the door to that child's day, they close the door to end it. So it really is an important sort of vibe for these guys. And some of the incidents brought to our attention this year, students arriving school, at school late, leaving early, pickups and drop-offs happening at off-times without parent notification, van accidents or breakdowns without parent notification, incompatible students assigned to the same van, driver commentary that escalated student behavior, potential driver smoking in the vans, things that, again, just, just make a little bit of difficulty with that seamless transition in, into school and out of school for these guys. So we just, our recommendation as the CPAC is just to really hold Vanpool to a high standard of care for our students and just monitor them for improvement so that we know by the time that the current contract is up, that they have to meet a high standard with us in order to continue working with us.
So I just want to read this quote out loud because I think it captures the essence of special education to some degree. Behavior change in a student doesn't happen because we write it in a plan, it happens because we change our behavior. The miracle isn't in the document, it's in the professionals that carry out that plan with fidelity. And I think that's really important to remember as, as we kind of talk about this. So I think, you know, we talked to Stacy, and we do understand that the district is troubling, struggling with staffing issues. And I think just being mindful that consistent knowledgeable staff is crucial for these kiddos' success. And in addition to that, the staff that currently exist, I think, providing some education around special education. So even if they're not in the special education world, but they work in the school, I think it's really helpful to have, you know, you know, adequate communication, like those ladies just really eloquently spoke to how important that is. I think in the special education world, same thing, it's really, really important to have that communication. Awareness of inclusion practices, effectively writing an IEP, which is just a whole world in and of itself, understanding behavior interventions and state guidelines, knowing the laws around special education, and being able to capture and record meaningful data is really important for these kiddos. So, you know, I think some of the parent feedback has been, it would be great for the district to provide additional training. And as a community, I think we really need to support our teachers and make sure that they have the resources and the educational opportunities and the staff ratios to be able to execute on some of this stuff.
And we'll just try and keep this brief and wrap up our presentation by saying that you guys, of course, know that the school year's theme is This Is Me, inspired by the powerful song from The Greatest Showman. I was personally honored and proud to have two children on that Plymouth North stage singing that inspiring anthem for our teachers in August. It was a beautiful, beautiful day. And I'm equally mindful of the message behind the song because I have a child with a disability in special education. This Is Me is about more than personal pride and embracing individuality, it's about fighting for acceptance and empowerment as a person who has differences, who may not meet the same expectations as everyone else. So we're here with you today to speak on behalf of the children in our schools who need your help to reach their full potential, so that they can stand on their world stage and say, look out because here I come, and I'm marching onto the beat I drum, I'm not scared to be seen, I make no apologies, this is me. Thank you very much, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Mark?
You mentioned the issues with transportation and Vanpool. Do you see any improvement from the beginning to the year to now, or has it been?
I think there have been some. I know Stacy has been working really closely with them and trying to kind of solve some of those questions. I think some of it has to do with getting a little bit more of a distinctive line of communication, you know, if you have a concern, who to call first. I know the last time we met with Stacy, we discussed that we weren't sure if Vanpool was keeping quite the same records that Stacy was, I feel bad, I should say Dr. Rogers. That we weren't sure if there was consistency between the records they keep and the records you keep, and, and making sure that nothing is winding up getting under, under-reported or confused in that way. But I know, I know Stacy has been working with them on that, and I think it's, I think it, there definitely have been some problems that have been solved. I think the, the consensus within the community is, is this going to be the thing now where every week there's another problem, or are we going to be able, be able to establish sort of a baseline of, most of the time, we're good, occasionally, there's an issue. Makes sense?
Ms. Batra?
I just wanted to say thank you guys for all that you do. I'm so glad that you're here in front of us to give a presentation because what you do is so important. And I also want to apologize for not being able to make a meeting yet this year, so I apologize for that. And it brings up, and I think I've brought this up every year for the last three years, that I think it's really important that we have, I know I'm an unofficial liaison, but I think we need an official liaison to this. I bring it up all the time. I just think that they do the same work that some of our school councils do, it's just a district council in some ways, so I'm just going to put that out there again for our discussion.
We're happy to have anybody come hang with us who is, if you are invested on our children, you get a seat at the table, my friend.
I think we'll follow up on that.
Because I know I've brought it up, I think, every year, but I do think it's really important, and, you know, if I can make their meetings, I try to, but my work schedule's been a little crazy this year.
You're talking to people with, children with disabilities, we understand, it's a crazy schedule, it's okay.
Ms. Haywood?
I just want to, so your, your presentation was awesome, and I did have the pleasure of meeting most of you last year. And I want to say that I actually agree with Michelle in terms of having a specific accounts, or a specific liaison for special ed. Two, I just wanted to ask, I guess, some questions. In terms of visibility, what exactly is it that you need?
So I think one of the things that would be helpful, we have this great pamphlet that the district has made for us, which we love, except for it's not, I don't think it's getting out to the population, and I know there's some privacy things that we have to navigate with something like this, but I just think even, you know, website presence, any kind of thing that we would do to promote anything else. So, you know, we do a lot of promotion of school activities, I think, you know, promoting the meetings, just giving this to everybody, or anybody who seems like they're struggling or needs a 504, or even has a meeting to talk about that, I think this might be helpful to get in that packet of information.
Also too, with the parent trainings, can you like expand on that?
Sure. Sure. Me too. So we have crowdsourced a bit about what topics parents would like to see. Feeding concerns, ADL skills have been a big concern, transition for our older students, which the problem is, I think, sometimes people start thinking about that a little bit later than they could. It's important to be mindful of that early on, so we would love to have somebody come in and talk about that process, what that looks like. We'd be happy to hear any additional ideas, but I think starting with social thinking is great because it is a district-wide program, it's in most of our schools, if not all. So that's what we were thinking, but the problem is, and it relates to the visibility, if people don't know about us, you know, it kind of, it's a little bit worrisome to schedule somebody to come and present and not have the, the audience that we'd like to have. Sure?
The other piece of that, I think, that would be helpful is the fact that, you know, we have to bear in mind, I mean, we, we've done a fair amount of research as a part of this group because it's just a necessary evil, but we, we do try to bear in mind certainly that most of the parents, they enter this world of special education or of disability, most of them have no idea what the process is involved, what special education looks like, and there really isn't a huge place for that in, in, in school systems. We're one of the few places that has a little bit of an in, in that way, that maybe can provide that because obviously, you know, teachers are teaching and, and administrators are doing their job, and in terms of parents, it's, it, we always feel bad, I know, when a parent comes to us and says, you know, I have to figure this out, and I don't even know where to begin because I'm not a teacher, or I'm not, you know, a therapist, or a nurse, or a doctor, or what, someone who has any kind of background. So we might be able to provide a little bit of that, at least as a jumping-off point if we have opportunities to say, hey, you know, if, if you have a child whose MCAS is coming up and you're not sure how to approach getting them through that, come and we'll have an expert here and we'll, we'll chat about it, you know?
Okay. Ms. Hunt?
I, I totally understand, I mean, even, like me as a parent that knows the school system, it's, it's hard. And I can't even imagine what it would be like for a parent coming in brand-new that didn't know anything and needed a little extra. And I'm, I'm still thinking about your communication and your pamphlet, and I'm like, I'm wondering, you know, when, when- You enter the district and you start that process, so that should be the time that you are made aware of your committee. I was in Framingham School this morning, and they had a parent resource center, and with my PTA hat, that's like the Cadillac for me, is when schools have those kind of resource centers or libraries for parents. But again, you got to get the parents to know, to go in there, to, to do that, like they have like, almost like a library for parents, where they can get, can get resources. But, and I know you said you go to all the open houses, but see, the students are already in the school by then, like you need to get them right when they register for school, I don't know if it's at kindergarten, or new students coming in.
New school event, yeah?
Yeah. So can you, is there any way you can hook up with like the PTAs in those schools, and maybe, or when they do a kindergarten event, like the early childhood did a fair this year? And, were you, I don't know if you were there or not, but maybe you should have had, you could have had a table there where it was all students, there were students there actually registering for kindergarten. So I'm just thinking, we need to like go backwards a little bit to get them when they're just entering our school system.
Yeah, we can absolutely try whatever you think would be helpful, I mean, that's part of why we thought if there was at least a baseline system, whether it's putting this pamphlet in every registration packet, whether it's, again, making them available at every IEP or 504 meeting, just something that would be a little bit of a jumping off.
That's where I was going to go with it, because when, with every IEP meeting, whether it's the annual review or reevaluation, or a 504 accommodation plan, paperwork is going back and forth between the home and the school.
Right.
Oh, go ahead, you guys-
And there should be a personal meeting with the team.
We were saying the same thing, I think the initial evaluation time, when you're-
Yeah, I mean, if this, if we had enough of these that that could become part of the standard packet, I think that would be a great start.
Time to do it because it doesn't all, you know, and fall and doing it early in the year is good, but, you know, you could have a four-year-old that's going through that process for the first time in, you know, January, so how do you ensure that all families are getting that information?
Yeah, I think that would be the best way around.
Easy way to confidentially share that information too, so that's just going home with the families that are going through that, that experience for the first time.
So Chris, let me ask you-
Right, well, that's the only concern we have with the open house sometimes.
Excuse me. Who would be responsible?
Dr. Rogers and I can have a conversation about how to, how to streamline that because, you know, that's going to happen at, you know, during team meetings at, at different, different schools, so we can make sure that we have a, a process for that to take place.
So I think that you folks can leave this meeting tonight knowing that as soon as we can, some communication will go with each 504, each annual review, each initial, and each reevaluation that tells the family about the pack. You can go home tonight knowing that's going to happen.
Wonderful, thank you.
And now, be careful what you wish for.
Yeah.
Because you're going to be getting a lot of phone calls, and a lot of people are going to want help.
Hopefully, we'll get more volunteers too.
There you go. Ms. Haywood?
I will say, in meeting, in meeting with them last year, this, this group is probably the most informed, just the, the amount of inform, the information that they had, their perspectives, I was blown away, so I, I think they're up to the task.
They have to be, they've got so much more to navigate, you know?
And actually, before, when you were talking, referencing Dr. Rogers as Stacy, I like to hear that because it tells me that the communication between your group and, and her office goes very well.
She's been very open to me and less, it's been great.
Excellent, excellent, glad to hear that. Other questions or comments? Okay, thank you so much for coming in tonight.
Thank you, thank you for having us.
We will hold our next agenda item until our senator and state reps arrive, just somebody make sure we notice that they're here when they get here, and move on to all business. Anything under all business we have to bring up this evening, I've also announced that we will review the whole thing in a next meeting or two, but anything to bring up tonight?
Yeah, I thought we were going to do it today, no?
No, we're not doing it tonight.
Next, next meeting.
I'm sorry?
The 20th.
The, the, next meeting.
The next meeting.
Yeah, okay, okay. Okay, new business, committee members.
We can't think of anything.
Okay, seeing no hands. The superintendent's report, Dr. May Estes?
Yes, this evening, I have some very good things to announce, I'll start with the first item, and I know Mrs. Burgess probably doesn't want me to announce this, but I'm going to announce it anyway. She, Ms. Burgess has been nominated and is going to be receiving the Crystal Apple Award for Excellence in Education by her church, and I just want to highlight that Ms. Burgess is, is going to be receiving this honor, and I think there is no better beacon of educational effort in our district than Margie. She's done a wonderful job for many years, and she's being recognized by her church. That's going to be May 15th, 2019. I know some of us have received an invitation, and Margie, we will be there to, to embarrass you, or do a few other things to, to allow others to, to recognize you. So honored to, to have the opportunity to be there, and congratulations on that.
Thank you. While you're there, you'll probably meet some teachers from the system because it's really a teacher appreciation night and dinner.
That is wonderful.
Teachers in the system. And also, the thing for, for me, that the important part of the award is that it's, this is the beginning of the award, that it's going to move forward and be an award every year, but in my name.
Wow.
And for, for someone in the community.
That's wonderful, Margie.
Yeah.
That's wonderful. So I'm, I'm glad that we could highlight that, and just want the community to know that we have some, some leadership on this board across, across the table, and it's wonderful to see one of our committee getting recognized for that, that leadership. And I had the opportunity last week to go to Yarmouth Shoah, it was a commemoration of the Holocaust and other acts of genocide in, in the 20th century, and that was put on by the Interfaith Clergy Council and No Place for Hate, and it was a, a great evening. We had student performances, and they, you know, just so proud for our students to be part of that, and to be able to experience that message of, you know, the, the theme for, for this year had everything to do with free speech and also free society. And one of the things that I was left with was, is really understanding that, you know, free speech is important, free society is important, but we also need to understand that, and that's one thing I, I wish I would have had the opportunity to talk to kids about afterwards, is it's, it's how you approach those opportunities, and how you do that with, with respect and, and understanding. I think sometimes in society, we, we've lost that, but I think the opportunity for our students to have free speech is, is very important, and we're, we're excited about that opportunity for our, our students. The, the next item is a reminder of Harbor Academy. Harbor Academy tour is on May 16th, 2011, and that'll be from 10 to 11 o'clock. It's, it's May 16th, from 10 to 11, excuse me. And one of the beautiful parts about being on 11 Lincoln Street is the central office staff, the staff that are now in 11 Lincoln Street, received an invitation- staff, the staff that are now in 11 Lincoln Street, received an invitation from classrooms at Nathaniel Morton to go read at the school. So we had our support staff, everyone across the table here. They probably had 30, without a doubt, people from our office go over and read to kids at the Morton, which was absolutely fantastic. I enjoyed myself. I read in two classrooms. And I shared with the students in fifth grade, I was telling them a little bit of the history of 11 Lincoln Street. And I shared with them that I had a photo in my office of the Plymouth High School class of 1916. And that photo was actually signed by every member of that class. And I did some little math for them. I said, "Well, how old is that picture? And do you think, how many people do you think in town right now are still alive that are in that picture?" And they were, they did a little bit of mental math and they were like, you know, that's, they realized that that building is really old and there are a lot of graduates. So I talked about the photos inside the gym of a lot of people that come by and want to see those photos because their grandparents are in there, great-grandparents are on those photos. But it's amazing to be in a school system where we have such history. And there are a lot of, if you look at the, and I'll share it with you when you come over to Central, the names on the back of that photo on that class of 1916, the former president of Massachoyet Community College was in my office the other day. And I showed it to him and he turned it around and his great-grandmother, no, his great-aunt was signed and she was actually in that photo. And it was just by happenstance that he had the opportunity to see that. And it's pretty heartwarming to see people see their relatives and they graduated. So I said, "I guess you really are Plymouthian," you know, and absolutely. So there's a lot of Plymouth names on these photos. And what we're going to do with these photos is keep the framing on front, but we're going to actually put a second frame underneath the photo so people can actually see who the people are that actually sign off on that graduation picture. I have the class of 1916 and the class of 1922. I don't know where the other ones are, but all I know is I have those two.
My mother graduated in 1935.
Well, we don't have that one ours, but I do have the school committee minutes from 1935. So maybe, maybe she's in that, so.
But also, the other thing, when you were talking about going over to Nathaniel Morton, in the past, quite a few years ago now, I have two from it. But they, Nathaniel Morton painted in an art class.
Yeah.
Little pictures like this, crazy little pictures, but I have them because they add some color and happiness. And so it'll be really nice when it's the school department that they're putting a whole bunch of them out for people to take when they come in.
Yes.
It's very nice. So that would be great.
So what we're going to do at 11 Lincoln Street is the first floor will be student artwork. And like we did at 253 South Meadow Road, the second floor will be photos of the history of Plymouth schools.
Okay.
So we can see old buildings. I have Bill Cohen shared with me an archive of old photos. We're going to frame those along with other photos that we have. What's pretty interesting about this photo that I have with the class of 1916 is they're sitting in front of the building that we're in. And that was when they were going to school there, which is pretty interesting that now we're back there. Right. So there's some great history there to be shared.
That's great. That's why we should be here.
And just want to give everyone an update on O'bury Street. I met with Jonathan Beeter, the DPW director this morning. And it looks like the work is going to begin on the Sandwich, Warren Ave area and also the South Street area. So both sides of O'bury Street, they're going to work on those sections first. They will not start working on O'bury Street itself until after school is out. They want to minimize that disruption during school hours. So you've already, if you've driven down, you know, Warren Ave, Sandwich and also on South Street during morning commute, you've already noticed some level of disruption. And you'll start to see some disruption there on those intersections more than you will on O'bury. But just getting there might be somewhat of a challenge. Okay? So that's a sub this morning.
They're going to come up Nook Road and use the school for a cut through.
Well, they've been doing that since we built it, so.
Right.
Yep.
Ms. Badger.
Has that been causing any delays for students getting to school in the morning?
Not yet.
Yeah, they're here. Okay.
But anything, in our, in our school setting, students probably will already start claiming that's the reason why they're late, so.
I figured.
All right. Dr. Sorensen, back to you.
Questions? Okay. Health curriculum.
Yeah. The only update we have since our last meeting is we're happy to say that we have posted for additional elementary health educators. Excuse me, that was off for some reason. Since our last meeting, we've posted for additional health educators. So we're happy to say that we'll be obtaining the staff to have a K to five health education for the upcoming school year. So we're really excited about that. So we hope to get those applications in soon, start that process. We've identified a couple of the principals that will lead that search and we'll have some additional teachers for the upcoming school year.
Ms. Badger.
Question, sorry. Do you have a date when we're going to get like the, a draft? I know we've seen the second steps and everything and how it's, you know, flows from grade to grade and what's happening, but how we're going to implement it? I know, obviously, it's over a course of probably three years to get it to where we really want it to be. But do we have some sort of idea when you're going to have, if we're going to do it in August at a retreat or whenever we have that?
Yeah. My recommendation would be to try, because what I'm trying to do is we're working on, so we're, obviously, we're working on the curriculum now, but it's really important, in my opinion, that as we're hiring these teachers, that they're a part of that process, too. So, and as I said, I've said in previous meetings, a lot of the, like, deep, invested curriculum work that we do with all departments is during the summer because our teachers are available. So our health educator has been working with our consultant when she has the time to do that. And it's really hard because she's teaching all day. So we're trying to do that as much as we can. And she's been focusing on the grade levels that she serves. But we're also trying to do that at the same time with our K to three. But as we're adding staff, it's really important to have them be a part of that process. I can certainly provide you a scope and sequence of what that will look like for our health education. So I'm happy to go over in depth during the retreat, I think, if you'd like that. And maybe we can even invite some folks that they're available to have some conversation about that. But I think that, in my opinion, if you all would be open to that, I think that would be the best venue to do that. Because it would give us time to really, to make those fine tunes and revisions to the curriculum. Because as you heard tonight, our teachers are doing some of the second step. So it's identifying the pieces that will stay with the teachers, you know, prioritizing the pieces that the health educators will do. And then there's other components and strands of health education in addition to the SEL that our health educators will be doing. So being able to map that out, involve the teachers that we're hiring in that process, too, is really important. But then by August, we'll have that so that we can share that with all of you then, if that would, you know, if that would be suitable.
Okay.
And my thinking is that, you know, we've worked out our personnel, or we're working out our personnel component of this curriculum. And then we're going to work out the actual curriculum in July, probably, or early August. Then we'll have both pieces in place to discuss at the retreat.
Correct.
So I see it. Okay. Any other questions on the health curriculum? Okay. As soon as our state senator gets here, we will take our representatives and state sen, he's not here yet, Vinnie didn't come in yet.
Not yet, not yet.
So we'll move on to the next item, which is retirements.
Yes, we have three retirements to share tonight. Barry Levy, a culinary teacher at South High, 26 years of service. Richard Olivera, who's a second shift custodian, 10 years of service at South Elementary School. And Kathleen White, an art teacher currently at Indian Brook Elementary School, after 16 years of service.
On behalf of the Plymouth School Committee, I congratulate these individuals on their retirement and thank you for their years of service to the Plymouth Public Schools.
Thank you.
And I'll be going to the retirement lunch.
Yes, in a couple of weeks.
Mr. Morgan, correspondence.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have four correspondents this evening. A donation grant recipient letter to Mandement Elementary from American Tower Foundation. Mandement Elementary was chosen for a 2019 foundation grant after being nominated by American Tower employee Paul Bergendahl, if I didn't mispronounce that. And three thank you letters from Allison Riordan to the Plymouth Garden Club for their generous contributions to the district-wide fifth grade curriculum, to the St. Vincent de Paul Society for Camp Intervention Scholarships granted to Plymouth students in need to attend this camp this summer, and to Mr. Olivia at Captain John Boats for gifting tickets to a whale watch, which were given to high school students at North and South enrolled in the Oceanography and Environmental Science Program.
All righty, thank you. That grant was pretty substantial.
Yes.
Can somebody share with us?
How much was that?
The grant was, the one from the Tower Company? That was $13,000?
$17,000.
$17,000. And just, Dr. Sorensen, to that point, you know, we're very fortunate that we have a lot of organizations that support the school system. This grant for Mandement Elementary School was $17,000. And it's, it was, the grant was written to be able to purchase additional technology for the school. The principal wrote the grant and we're able to get that. And Captain John Boats, Bob Avola, who actually owns Captain John, is a friend of the district and calls me up once a year and says, "Hey, I want to give a boat. Can you populate it?" So talked with Allison Riordan. Sometimes it's a fifth grade distribution, sometimes it's a high school. Have some marine biologists onboard and he takes them out and they saw whales, dolphins, and, I don't know, they had such a great, from my understanding, it was a very good experience for our kids. A little bit rainy that day, but it's something that, it was calm, though. Yeah. It's something that we have a great opportunity to experience here in our community.
That's excellent. That's excellent. Okay. We have the honor tonight to have our state representatives, Kathy Lonatra, Matt Morituri, and our state senator, Vinnie DiMascio, have been willing, agreed to be here this evening and help us understand where we are at the state level. Could you please come down and join us at the table?
Let's go to it and it'll say...
Good evening and welcome. Thank you for being here.
Did, just, do you think we might want to have the MTA representative as well? Maybe Tom Pinto might want to join us as well?
He's going to come down.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to give these reps a chance to speak.
Thank you.
And then I'm going to invite Tom down.
Thank you.
So perhaps you folks can bring us up to date a bit and then we have questions.
Does this work?
Yeah, that's for the TV. Yep.
Okay. Well, thank you for having us. It's a pleasure to be here. We've had the opportunity, kind of, well, at least I have had, where I represent from Falmouth to Pembroke, a lot of school committees are doing this and asking us what is going on because of the fact that there's been a lot of conversation right now about Chapter 70, the Promise Act. And clearly, there's a, there's a sentiment that they're doing something. Just to give you a sense of what I'm seeing, though, is that they are doing something, but the goal is to address the English language learners, the achievement gap, and areas which, just from my experience, and again, here's my challenge, is that as a representative of this area, the significant amount of dollars that we're seeing put into the Chapter 70 formula doesn't necessarily move the needle that much here. And it's, and again, this is throughout the entire, into the entire area. However, in the Lowells, Lawrences, Fall Rivers, New Bedfords, it moves it significantly. That's because of the foundation budget review formula that came out and the recommendations that came from there were really to address those issues. And so I guess what I'm trying to say is that you're seeing a lot of money put into this. The problem is, is that it's not proportionate. So what we've tried to do, and this delegation, is to try to address the per pupil rate specifically because we feel like that helps this area more than others. And that's where my focus is, just because, you know, our job is to make sure that you have as much resources as you possibly can get to try to effectuate, you know, a positive education, educational experience here. So, and a long way around it, I say this to prepare you for the fact that I think, I do believe you're going to see education be a huge priority. I do believe you'll see a lot of money going into it. I don't believe it's going to have it move the needle as much in this area because of the way the foundation budgets. I'm sure you all know this, you've studied it. I'm just giving you the perception. I don't see that changing. Everything I've seen, every meeting, I just was, I was just down here where Jason Lewis, the chairman of education, was down on the Cape with Julian Seer and they came down. And, you know, all the conversations were around this very topic. We were there Friday night till like 6:00 o'clock at night going over this. But everything I'm hearing is that it is not going to move the needle in our region as much as we would like and, you know, really go after those English language learners and those, those in the achievement gap and obviously financially disadvantaged people. So that's kind of my perspective of what I'm hearing. I want to turn it over to either Matt or Kathy. Ladies before gentlemen, or?
I'm just probably going to say what Matt and I discussed in the way here. There are five bills that were filed. They did have a hearing on the March 22nd. They're still in committee. So, you know, I'm hearing the same things that Senator DiMascio was hearing. That's what we're discussing. I have six towns in this area and it's the same situation here. But I'll hand it over to Matt.
Yeah, thank you so much for having us here tonight for this. It's really an important discussion. And I think the good news is, is that we're having a discussion. I think a few years ago, there was really no discussion about it and schools were getting what they were getting and that's it. But we're hearing it from everywhere throughout the Commonwealth. Everyone is talking about it. As Kathy said, there are, there are five bills that are, that are out there now that have been heard already. As the senator said, nothing's really going to help us at this point, but at least it's a starting point, it's a talking point. In the House budget that we just passed a couple of weeks ago, we put an extra $218 million in the budget for education. And it puts the per pupil cost from $20 or $30 at this point. So we're hoping the Senate will at least do that so it brings it up a little bit. But I don't, and I agree with the senator, I don't think we're going to see too much significant things happening in this session. But again, it's being talked about and I think we'll see some more happening down the road, maybe hopefully by the next session, to help communities like ours. Because there was more communities like ours that have issues. And I think Plymouth, just the unfunded mandates alone are close to, what, 18, 20 million dollars? And that's significant for a community like ours and it's important that we address it, so. But, you know, whatever you all can do to help us as well, we're all in this together, I think really goes a long way.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate your opening statements and we have a lot of topics that we want to touch with you. I want to invite Mr. Pinto down to the table, please. Dr. Maestis, if you want to start, please.
Yeah, just, I know we've all talked about this. And anytime we, we're together, it seems like we're always talking about funding. And I think one of the most difficult pieces that we have, I've been going around the school district and I've had staff meetings to explain the budget to our staff. I've been doing it for the last 11 years and every year, it's something similar as far as what the message that I give our staff is. You know, this year, we experienced a $3 million budget increase. And $3 million budget increase for us is just same level of service. That means that that is our fixed costs that are just carrying us from one year to the next. So this year is the first year that we were in operating budget, not including benefits. We hit a $100 million. So we were 97 last year, 100 million this year, will be 103 million next year. And that's, that's without even, that's no new programs, other than us doing program analysis to move staff. We're openings, you know, like health, we're doing a health model change and we're doing that. And I think one of the hard parts for us, and you hear from the community all the time, is whatever we don't get in state aid is going to go right to the tax base. And that's where we start to see those increases. And that's why people are, you know, at us all the time because we're the source of some of those increases. So, and, you know, Friday, I think Matt and I and Vinnie were at a presentation at South Middle. And I think we all came to the conclusion that if we add programs, it'd be nice if to the conclusion that if we add programs, it'd be nice if we had some level of money that comes along with those new programs. Because when you take a look at the superintendent's checklist from eleven years ago when I started to today, and take a look at all of the things that have increased, you know, as far as our responsibility, they're, they're pretty heavy. We'll, we do it, and we, we know it needs to be done. The, the high majority of things on that list are good things for us to really have in education. They're monitoring, they're ensuring that kids are taken care of at different levels. We, we really welcome the opportunity to do those things. The problem is, is the general public doesn't really understand that that's caused an increase for, it's diminished capacity in some areas, because it's the same people doing the same work. But we've, we never really have received any kind of support to be able to make those things tangible in our district. So, I am concerned about, about, you know, five, six, seven, eight, nine years down the road, if this trajectory doesn't shift at some point. Because I envision the day where, you know, Plymouth hasn't had, you know, these difficult meetings, town meetings, like we had when I first came here, where, you know, we, we had some difficult struggles between the town and the school department over cutting budgets at percentages, which is something that I really don't want to see happen in Plymouth. But unless there's some relief in the future, it's going to make it difficult. So, that's that point. And then, I think the second point is, the, the mode that we're in in education today is causing us to be extremely creative and think out of the box about how we implement programming, and how we change our school system. Every school system in Massachusetts, for that matter, across the country, can be a lot more progressive, and we need to be. In order for us to meet the needs of kids, not of today, but of tomorrow, we need to morph. We have to change. And the problem that you have is some of these changes, not necessarily for Plymouth, but, but educational in general, they're very costly, because it's transition in staff, it's going after, if we want to focus on STEM, and we try to go out and hire a physics teacher, or a robotics teacher, or an engineering teacher, we're not going to get them for what we pay teachers. If we want to have a paradigm shift in, in education, we're, I believe that we need to refocus the importance of what the modern education system looks like. And I think most communities are really concerned about what that, that dollar amount is. And that, that puts us at a, we're very restricted in what we can do, so it takes a lot of effort from school systems. We've been somewhat adaptive to how we look at our programming. We're going to have to work even harder in the future to be able to look at how we grow our programs to meet the needs of the kids of the future. I think what has driven the Plymouth Public Schools in the last seven, eight years are having two, two brand-new buildings that we actually revamped our programs to meet the needs of the kids, and the programming came with the building. If we didn't have those opportunities, I don't know that our school system would be where it's at today with the, some of the progressive programs that we've all talked about. So, I think Plymouth has had the opportunity to have those, those transitions because of these buildings. I'd be afraid of where we would be today if we didn't have that, because I know funding would have been extremely difficult. And the last point, I think, I think you saw how hard it was when we got full decay. I mean, it, it was a campaign, and that was 1.4 million. I mean, that was, it was a all-out campaign that we went out and, you know, that's what we have to do anymore in education. It would be nice if, if we got more federal and state dollars to be able to infuse these school systems that need the money so badly. And it's a burden, it's becoming more and more of a burden on our community. I'm receptive to our community, because the tax rates are, are going up, because the needs of the communities are expecting, I don't think anybody wants our school system to not offer more programs. They want more. And that's where our challenge is, and we're up to the challenge. It's just, it's become more and more difficult. So, Dr. Sorensen, I, I know that's probably not what, what we're here to focus on so much.
I'm going to ask Mr. Pinto in a moment to speak, but I just want to tell you that I personally appreciate that there are economically disadvantaged communities, and you named them before. And it makes sense that those communities get the help they need. That's a given. So, we all understand that. But as you're hearing from Dr. Mayes, and you'll hear from us as we go on, our needs are increasing more and more, and those two schools really helped. And we're not, we're not ungrateful, but we watch our needs increase more than our dollars, much more than our dollars. But we'll get to that in a moment. Mr. Pinto.
I appreciate you allowing me to come to speak, and, you know, I think this is a, you know, once in a generation opportunity to fight for education. You know, as president of the EAPC, you know, my main priorities are obviously, you know, kind of except the United States of Plymouth and Carver. So, you know, that's what I want to fight for. And, but I also want to fight for education in general. I think if we look at the three major bills, the, the Promise Act, the, the Governor Bill, the Tucker Bill, I think all the numbers would show that the Promise Act are going to infuse the most dollars into education across the state. Now, again, for our concerns, you know, the per pupil expenditure, I know the Promise Act, if fully funded, to this, would give fifty dollars per student. I believe one of our, you know, social representatives actually pushed for, for a hundred dollars per student.
Yeah.
Yes, Cutler.
Yeah.
So, I mean, yes, I, I, I think we, we are a unique opportunity right now, that it's being discussed, like you said, by everybody. I was just at the, the state, the state annual meeting this weekend, and, for, for two days, and it, you know, was the main topic. We're talking about May 16th coming to the State House. We, you guys allowed me to discuss that last week. So, I would just ask, I know, you know, obviously, getting these bills through are a time of compromise and whatnot, but I think also, it's, it's, it's our duty as people who support education in communities that it's also opportunity to, to fight for education. So, we're not, you know, we're fighting down the road. So, you know, I, again, reach out, and I ask everybody coming up, you know, these sessions, let's, the community watching, let's, let's, let's push forward, let's, let's fight for, for the best bill to move forward, so that students across the state can, can receive the best education possible. And I know we do a great, unique job here in Plymouth, and, you know, as we said, discussed. So, again, I appreciate always the opportunity to talk and come down here. And I appreciate, you know, our, our elected leaders here. They are, you know, they are a great group. They are very accessible. They, you know, we, we have, I think I have meetings planned with them coming up down the road. So, so that, that's, they were able to attend, and I do appreciate that.
I'm going to see what committee members now. Ms. Hunt?
Hi. I know with the Promise Act, I know Representative Lonatra and Morituri, you have both signed on to it. You have not yet. Right, okay. And I know you say that a lot of it doesn't involve us, but one of the big parts of it, too, is special education. And we know that that grossly affects us, and it hurt us a lot. And a lot of it has to do with out-of-state, out-of-district placement. We're up over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a student to do that. Also, ELL, our ELL population is growing, and our low-income population is growing, too. So, I think to say that it really doesn't affect us is inaccurate. And I know that most of the educational associations of all of the bills that are out there right now are supporting the Promise Act. And one of the things is, is, you know, we keep saying it's not going to happen yet, it's not going to happen yet. And, you know, I worked really closely with Senator Ten Kennedy when we were doing the reauthorization of No Child Left Behind, and that went, what, ten, sixteen years before something got done? And you're looking at kids and students and their entire school careers, that nothing gets done to help them. So, I really, really hope that the three of you will do everything that you can to not have that attitude that it's not going to get done, and that we're going to do something. And maybe you can tell us what your thoughts of to make it happen, instead of, you know, saying it's not going to happen. Well, what are you going to do to help us to make it happen, or to help us to make it happen so it does affect Plymouth?
So, so I, just to make it clear, maybe I missed, maybe you missed, either misunderstood me, or I said something. I, I'm not saying it's not going to happen. What I'm saying is that it is going to happen. I believe it's going to happen. I just don't believe it will move the needle in this community as much as one would hope for. So, that's why I haven't signed on to the Promise Act, because for me, it's more about targeting towards special education for transportation costs, you know, to, why not, that's where we should be fully funding, because it has direct impact in this community. If I, the per pupil, I signed on to Josh's a hundred dollar per person to this community, because that has direct impact here. If you look at, and I'm, and I'm, just came from a Ways and Means hearing in, in Boston, and the conversation was about what we're doing as a senate in regards to education. We are going to be spending more in education than we've ever spent. However, the reality is, is it is not, the, the number is better, but it's, it's not when, as good as when we target fifty, if we go to the fifty dollar per pupil, or we do fully fund special education, or we fully fund the circuit breaker. Those are the things that have a direct impact. And so, that's where my focus has been. And to your point, I understand that. But within the budget that's there, my job is to try to make sure that this community gets as much as possible. And that's how, and if you look at my, my region from Pembroke all the way down to Falmouth, that's not the case, not even, not even close. So, he's talking two hundred and some odd million dollars in the, in the House that, that it's increased. Two hundred million dollars. And yet, the number to Plymouth is really nowhere near the three, three million dollars that you need, right? And the senate, I will tell you, is going to do even more than that. And it's going to be significant. To the numbers that I think, to what you say in the Promise Act, again, huge dollars, but it's not, the way the formula is broken out, it doesn't have participation. Yes, we have more ELL. So, so in those areas, it's going to be a little bit better. But for me, and as, as far as I'm concerned, I'm going to fight to get this community as much as possible. And by doing that, it's per pupil, it's, it's special ed, it's the circuit breaker, those are where I focus my efforts. You know, and so to that extent, you know, I, I don't know, but I, I only have what, from my experience in, in doing this, it's most of us, this isn't a Republican-Democrat thing, this is a regional thing. And our region, through the Chapter 70 formula, the way it's set up, do, does not benefit as much. And, you know, I hear Gary explain, three million dollars, that's, that is significant. And, and I promise you, if we could put five hundred million dollars in this year into education and through the formula, you will not see the money that you're looking for. And so, that's my perspective on it.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I do want to address what you're saying, is you're making it sound like that we're not trying and we don't care, and that's not-
Oh, no, 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 no.
Let me finish. But that's what you're making it sound like. I want to make it clear that we're fighting for everything we can. We signed on to the House bill for a hundred dollars per pupil. That didn't happen.
Yeah.
We did another one that Josh did for fifty dollars. That didn't happen. So, what I'm saying is, what happened is, we got thirty per pupil. It's not the twenty that happened last year, but it's a thirty now. So, it's a little bit, but as the senator's saying, that's not even a drop in the bucket what's going to be needed in Plymouth. So, we'll continue to do that. But remember, we're only two out of a hundred and sixty, and it is rural against urban. And that's the bottom line.
Yeah. And I, if I, if I came across that way, that's not exactly what I meant. But what I meant is, if there isn't the bill out there that you feel fits what you're looking for, then what is going to be done? Like, are you working to create something new? Are you coming up with other? That's more or less what I meant. If there's nothing that you think is going to fit to help us, what are you doing to make sure that we do get the help? That's more or less what I meant.
I appreciate that. And I, and I think the, the Promise Act is that we have signed on to, is something that, you know, we're trying to push. But will it be the answer to what you need? It won't totally be the answer what you need, which is why I think it's going to need another session or two before we really to get to what the senator's saying is about. The formula really needs to have to change, and there needs to be a will. The good part about it, everyone's talking about it.
That's right.
The bad part is, nobody knows how to really get there, and how do you get that funding for it?
Just to go back, the, the biggest gap that you're seeing right now in education is really in the lower-performing schools. And so, that's where you're seeing all of the focus go. And so, that's where the conversation's happening. You will, I, I'm telling you right now, something is going to happen in regards to a piece of legislations directly towards education, a mix of the three different bills that you're talking about.
That's what I-
It will happen, guaranteed. I, I only, I guess I, I just want to lower the expectations, because everyone's talking about, because I, I mean, as I said, every school committee's asked me to come before them to have this conversation. And of course, when you're, when they're talking, they're talking significant dollars. It's, this is great, this is good for us. And I just want to show you the reality of, even if you invest significant monies the way the formula is, isn't going to be there. So, how do you get towards what Gary's talking about? Just, just to stay based at three million dollars, how would I get there? The way we get there is to, for me, is to be, you know, prescriptive, to work with my colleagues in suburban communities that are going up against urban communities. And let's face it, the urban communities have greater populat, legislators, greater, not greater legislators, greater amount of legislators.
Never greater.
Quantity, not quality.
Yeah, exactly. But they, but they do have more, and that's really where the, where that focus is going. And so, I, again, I just wanted to, you know, please forgive me for being redundant, but I want to make that clear. It really is a-
You did.
-funding issue.
Thank you.
And I want to-
You know, just one more thing I want to say, too. If you look back at fiscal year 2015, you know, the town of Plymouth, the Chapter 70 money was 23.6. And here we are looking at a House budget for 2020, five years later, and we're looking at 26.3. So, in five years, it's not even three million.
Yeah.
So, and that's the thirty dollar per pupil that we're looking at. That, yeah, it's gone up from twenty to thirty, but that's my point. It's just, it's nowhere near where we need to be.
Right, and that's my point as well. Mr. Morgan?
Well, just to kind of piggyback on what you said, Senator, and the, I like to give kudos to our staff, administrative staff, and our teachers, because the reason why we may not get as much money because of the excellent job they do in running our programs and, and keeping us as one of the best schools, districts in the, in the state. But we do, like Dr. Mayes says, we're treading water, and we're finding innovative ways and, and to try to, to stay where we are. But eventually, it's going to catch up with us. So, we appreciate, we know why, in one of the formulas, that we're going to get less because of the job we're doing, but don't forget us, is what I'm trying to say.
Right, yeah.
Ms. Badger?
I was just going to kind of echo the same thing, sentiment that everybody else has had. Thank you for what you're doing, and for working really hard to help our students and to help us, give our students that education that we've been giving them, but even to a greater degree. The one thing I did want to say is, Senator DiMascito, your comment about transportation, that's a thing that, right now, and some of the school committee members know, that I'm trying to work with Mr. Costin on a resolution for MASC in the fall, which obviously, it's a resolution, it goes nowhere, but, but for people to maybe push it. But to see if we can reallocate how transportation is paid for in the state, where regional school districts, we have a bigger, like, town mass and streets than a lot of our regional school districts. So, to me, it's an unfair, I mean, I understand the point was so that communities are working together, and it was to push the resources and things like that. But we're in a different place. We can't do that. We have too many kids. If we took Carver back on, or, or Carver took us back on, it just wouldn't work. It would be even bigger. So, that's one of the things that I'm trying to work for with Mr. Costin, to try to figure out what kind of wording we can put forth, to hopefully maybe someday in the future, see some aid in our way for transportation.
I, I do love that idea, actually, because it's, you talk about the, the landmass, and we've had this conversation quite a bit. And when you do have this resolution, you know, to get that to us, because this is an issue that regional school transportation, of course, I, in my district, I do have some regional schools-
Yes, you do.
...as well, as you do. And so, it is a, a topic of funding regional, you know, school transportation, fully funding regional school transportation, as, as opposed to not, and that's what we've been seeing happen. But there's a group of people that fight together. And so, if I, we were able to take Plymouth and put it in there, then I think you'd see some action in there, because there's a lot of my colleagues that have regional schools. And, and you see, we, we get together. And it's, as I said, it's not about Republicans and Democrats.
No.
It's about, you know, it's about communities, smaller communities going up against and feeling left behind. And I'll tell you, things aren't great here in Plymouth. You go to Sandwich, I, you would, I mean, what they get in school aid from, from them, it's, it's scary. And of course, one of our former, your former colleagues is there, Pam Gould, and we were just at this meeting. And it's just, it's because the way the formula was written, written in 1993, and it just progressively becomes more and more challenging, and they're losing students because of the cost of housing on Cape Cod. And it's, so they, it's just this double whammy, and yet, the costs are increasing. And we had a really significant conversation in regards to the things that you do now in education that you never did before, the things that- that you never did before, the things that your nurses are dealing with, the mental health, you know, that you're putting in, those are significant costs. I think that there's, needs to be a conversation, this was brought up the other day, in regards to the fact that, why can't we get reimbursed from Mass Health, the school department, from Mass Health in this, in this vein? Because we're providing mental health services right in school that we didn't, didn't ever do before. That's a conversation that I think came out of our last meeting. And so that's something that I'm going to be focusing on in regards to there, to get, you know, real dollars to, to you that will be there. And I, and the beauty of that is, it's state participation outside of the education budget, and it's federally, federal participation as well, because it's healthcare services. You're doing healthcare services beyond education, it's not...
I can tell you, as a recipient of Mass Health benefits, I got a call from Mass Health a year ago, telling me they were no longer going to pay for Mass Health, pay for my services to a Mass Health student in the school district. They made the decision a year ago to stop providing those benefits. So you're up against a, not even a steep hill here, you're up against a cliff, because they just changed the law last year.
And, and that's, and that's why we have to get together and work together, because the conversation came up, Mass Health isn't going to want to do this. It's something that we would have to do legislatively to require Mass Health to do this, and be able to, be able to make the case that there would be, there would be federal participation as well.
I agree with you. Dr. Mestas?
Great, great, great conversation. One of the things that we struggle with is, if, if you were to put a mileage number by every single child that rides a bus, and do that comparison from district to district to cars to Commonwealth, you would see that our kids ride the bus way longer than most kids. Our bus transportation for regular day, not, not even special education or even out of district transportation, is six million dollars a year. That's what it costs to get kids home. And not everyone rides a bus. So, you know, I think those are the concerns that we have, is Plymouth is, is a unique situation because of the geography of our, of our community. But, you know, it's almost like we're penalized because we have these conditions, you know?
We recently were talking about this too, about the regional school. I'm so glad you brought this up, because I wanted to bring it up town. And we started looking exactly what you said at other parts of the state. And we are one of the biggest...
We're the biggest community.
Even though we're only one community.
Right.
But when you look at these other communities that are regional districts, their square footage that they, the square acres they go to, it's a lot less than what we do all the time.
That's right.
So, we are starting to have that conversation. So I would love to, you know, we would love to work with Michelle and Gary on that to see what we can propose to get in that regional conversation, because we have a good case.
Yeah. And I think the way to effectuate that is probably maybe say, set up regional school transportation and/or communities that travel more per person.
Right.
That, that, so that's why if you could get us that per person, per pupil mile traveled, we need to find a way to fit into that, because I think it would, it could help.
It's, it's a calculation that every school district can, can, can submit to, that these are how many miles a bus route does. You know, we have three tiers, and it's very easy for us to be able to do that. Gary does it every year, it's a matter of, it's, it's cumbersome.
Yeah.
Our bus routing system is very cumbersome, you know, which makes it more expensive.
Our average bus puts on sixty-two miles a day. So think, compare that to that district you were just talking about. They probably don't do sixty-two miles in a week.
Yeah.
Well, we're also looking at the pressures with charter school.
Yeah.
So, what do we, seven, eight million comes out of our budget from chapter seventy for Rising Tide, and we, logistics wise, cover their bus routes and transportation costs. So with an antiquated formula, there's an urgency for, I think, the alleviated burden on our district not being an average district in that need. You know, because we share that fund, you know, we share the money, and then we have our budget, and we have to go to the town, and then that's supplemented through the tax base. So we have to look at charter schools as well.
Yeah.
So, that's another moving entity that, you know, thirty years ago, we weren't looking at, or even two thousand and fifteen. And to see that percentage increase exponentially, that small increase, we're still sharing that cost with charter, and that rate's going up as well.
Well, I could share with you again, that if you look back at, again, the same numbers from two thousand and fifteen, the charter reimburse is one point two million. In the house budget that is just coming out, it's only seven hundred and fifty-one thousand. So it's gone down an almost a half.
Yeah, and, and it'll be worse, because in two years from now, MAP Academy will be not...
Starts phasing up.
Yeah, getting their money, yeah, from us too, so it's going to be worse.
And that is, was a big conversation when I was at the, it's actually a meeting with superintendents of all Cape Cod, because Sturgis is now on their second high school. And so, they're growing, and so, and they have school choice there.
Yep.
And so you're seeing, you know, it's, it's really complicated there. And a lot of, a lot of communities are, just the town of Sandwich, three million dollars, Sandwich is much smaller than here, and they're sending three million dollars to Sturgis. And so that, that's a conversation that you're seeing a lot of pressure. The best thing we can do is to join forces with other communities, other like communities. And I think in this, in this vein, that's where we're going to get our, where we're going to get our, our colleagues to be able to make the case. And frankly, even in the Boston, because charter schools are really big in the inner cities, because they've had problems with education, and so the charter schools have a lot of support. So, to be able, if that's the case, and they have the support, there needs to be the funding to, to be commensurate with it.
Well, that, if, if chapter seventy is readdressed, and it's, the language is rewritten, there needs to be clear concise language with the charter school to alleviate some of that burden, because it's not a publicly funded private school, it's publicly funded. But it has to counter in that consequence, especially for districts like Plymouth. Again, we're not an average district. I think what are we equated to, to Haverhill, right? In the, in the chapter seventy equation, we're closest to Haverhill, we're nothing like Haverhill. And we're very unique and very different. What we are in North Plymouth versus what the needs are in South Plymouth are inherently different. So I, I appreciate, you know, your advocacy and, and the language, and just learning a little bit more about kind of the things that we face at this table with, you know, the social emotional component, the health curriculum that we've had to change, and technology changes so frequently as well. These are rising costs that we're faced with consistently. And going to town meeting and looking at our budget, you know, it's a big piece of the pie in Plymouth. It's a big piece, but we are a big, big district with a larger staff. So there's a lot of minutia and components behind it, where we really need to push forward with figuring out the foundation budget, and hopefully getting some more funding in. And I know it was a house bill last year, it sat, it wasn't really heavily debated from what I gather, so it's nice to see that we've had more progress. It's just, let's hope something comes out of it sooner than later, for sure.
Yeah.
And it's, it's an excellent point, and I will tell you, this is important to us. This conversation really helps us, because you're on the front lines, this is what you do every day. You are, you're there, dealing with these issues, and we are, we, what we then have to do is take that and then try to apply that into the conversation up there. So, I want you to know as far, from this delegation, this conversation is really important. And it will help us at least be able to interject these conversations. I've heard it loud and clear in regards to the concerns, in regards to what charter, the charter school losses, as far as transportation. All of these things are really important, and I really do think it will help as the argument goes on.
Ms. Haywood?
Oh, I just wanted to talk, when you mentioned the, I guess, the Mass Health reimbursement. So, are, or is this delegation in agreement to, say, the Medicaid reimbursement that's received for services? I know that regional school districts receive, it goes back to the school as opposed to local school districts, where it goes into the municipal fund and doesn't necessarily go back, or the hundred percent doesn't go back to the school. And I know that's something that was brought up as well, in terms of the budget.
How the logistics work, I'm not aware, so if you could, if you could help me in explaining how the logistics work. It was a conversation, and the reason I brought it up is because it was, from the social and emotional expenditures have increased rather significantly, and a lot of that is not reimbursable. That's, that was the comment, it's coming out of the budget. So, it was, I'll give you an example. A prisoner goes into Plymouth House of Corrections, they're on Mass Health. As soon as they go into the House of Corrections, they go off of Mass Health until they're released, and then they come back. Now, why should that, why should that be the case? And so there are a group of people that try, which want to change that, because, just because they're in prison doesn't change the fact that they're getting healthcare. They're going to get it when they're out. And so, I think the same model should, the argument should be the same, is that we're providing healthcare in a school setting, it should be reimbursed to the school. So outside of your budget, there should be another line item. It would be possibly through Mass Health. I do believe that there's, you know, because it's coming there, that then there's, it's matching dollars, you know, so let's say we put another fifty million dollars in through Mass, through Mass Health, half of that, two, twenty-five million, would come from the federal government. And it's fair, it's a fairness issue, I think. It's, if you're providing mental health services, those are healthcare costs. And, so that's, so, so if you could get me the details on how it works between a local community...
As opposed to regional.
As opposed to a regional, that I'm not aware of.
Well, let me give you the details that I know specifically. So, what I would get phone calls from districts in the area, not just Plymouth, for students who are on Mass Health, who need a risk assessment because their behavior's been out of control, or they need an evaluation, a neuropsych evaluation. If they were Mass Health, for the last decade, Mass Health paid for those evaluations. Specifically last year, they called me personally and said, "We're not paying for them anymore." So I do want you, that's the specific of it. And it's the same thing with counseling services.
And it's OT, PT, it's, it's actually, I'm combined. So, my understanding, and I mean, Dr. Mestas could speak to it, but is that, just on a regional school basis, is that they get that, that reimbursement comes back to the regional school district, as opposed to a local. It goes into the municipal fund for the town and our city.
Yeah, it goes to the town municipal fund, not schools.
And they allocate, so we don't, you know what I mean? We don't receive those money tonight.
Yeah, so, so this is a policy issue, and I think it's, it's pretty well known in education that you, we have the opportunity to do billing for certain features. You know, OT, PT. We actually do a really good job of documenting those segments of time that our counselors work with children for reimbursable services. So, that Medicaid reimbursement, we submit the hours. We actually have staff that actually collect all of that. So we do all the work, we do the counseling, we do the work. That then comes into the town as revenue. So the town takes it in and buys down the debt of the town, opposed to that going to impact the school department. So, one of the things that we've done, we work with UMass Amherst with billing assistance to make sure that we maximize every bit of billing that we possibly can. We spend about two hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. We bring in about a million. So the town is taking in about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of revenue from the work that we do for those services. So I think what Ms. Haywood is saying is that with, with certain provisions with regional schools, the region, regional schools actually can benefit from getting those dollars opposed to the municipality getting the dollars. So, it creates some little, it's a policy issue. And I think those are some of the things that I think we, if we could just hammer those, some of those things, that would help us dramatically. But I will tell you, you know, all, all three of you for coming here tonight, I'm just grateful that you're here.
Yes.
I'm also grateful that you've always listened, okay? But I think more importantly, if you tell us what we can do, we'll do it. If, if you give us a, get the people out, go to the superintendents association, you know, Vinny and I, you and I have gone to superintendents, and we've pitched ideas in front of them. We will do it. If you think there's something that will tip the balance, we will do it. So, it's just not us asking, we, we want you to tell us that there's things that you need from us to do.
That's, that's a great point. And what helps us, in the five years I've been there, is if you have ideas, and I've heard some good ideas tonight, you know, regional transportation, the Mass Health. If you have ideas for regulation changes that we can do, helping us get that information, helping write that language for that, we can file bills on each side of the House and the Senate, and then do exactly what you're saying, once the bills are filed, then get a coalition of superintendents, MMA, I mean, all that. But it all starts with having that bill. And you know this, you know, we've got six thousand bills that are filed in the House, so it's hard to know all that. But if you have ideas for a bill, get it to us, we'll file it, and then we can work that process.
And, and, we just want them to survive. And if, with the, the most information that we can possibly get that impacts the most school districts, it's very hard, you know, we're, we're compared to districts. It's hard to compare Plymouth's, you know, geography and demographics. We're a very, very unique school system. Not, not, not in offerings or any of that, it's just living every day. We, we just have unique, unique challenges, you know?
And that's the problem with the transportation issue, because we're kind of isolated in that. It's, it's not like we can tie into others, so we have to tie into...
Right.
There aren't other communities in our cir, in our circumstance. So, that's something we have to define ourselves. That's a piece, you know, as this conversation is happening, and, and this comes up, I'm willing to file amendments. So I, the word is, by the end of June, we will have a education bill out there. Whether it comes to the floor in the fall, most likely that's going to be the case. Because we'll be dealing with the budget, and it's such a big topic. But to the extent that we can come up with language so that I can file an amendment, because we're, we're going to do an education bill, those are the opportunities where you can actually effectuate change through the amendment process in a, in a piece of legislation. So if we can be creative on this transportation idea, I want to do this. In regards to the issue on the mass, the mass health issue, superintendent from NOSIT...
Tom Conroy.
Yes. So he brought this issue up, and so, and he told me he's going to be working with the other superintendents to try to come up with language to be able to, to be able to address this issue in a broader, in a broader scale, for things that you're dealing with, that you didn't deal with in the past. Those are the places where I think we can help, because a piece of legislation is going to go through. How can we find the targeted areas that help these regions? They're going to help the big, they're going to help the big schools, you know, we know that. How do we get them to help our schools? And that's what I'm focused on. So, you can help us to do that. You seem to understand this, the other issue better than I do. So if you can get us the information, then we'll file the amendment, you help educate us, and then we can bring the floor fight. Because I guarantee you, if, other than the, the transportation issue, if I'm dealing with it, I guarantee you, other, others of my colleagues are going to be in the same boat. And that's where we have strength, is when we come together, working together.
Ms. Hunt?
And that, that's what I was actually, that's exactly what I was asking you. But also with the tran, the transportation issue, and if you don't have it already, we can get it to you, MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, is trying to fight for the regional part of it. And what, one of the things, Ms. Badgers, that we're all trying to do is amend that resolution or have a new resolution for next year's conference to have MASC fight for us to include the area or the geographical area. So, they already have something for regional schools, which we can share with you if you don't, if you haven't seen that already. But we want, we actually did not support it unless we could make those adjustments to it.
So, perf, perfect then. So when you take that language and then try to figure out how we can...
Exactly, how can we fit into it?
How we can find a way to add us, that will be an amendment that this delegation, both in the House and Senate, will file on your behalf to try to make that case.
So you need that language in the next couple of weeks.
We can send it to you.
As I said...
It's our, it's a MASC policy, we could send it to you.
Right, so, as Jason Lewis said, his mandate was by the end of June to have a piece of legislation. So he's going around right now, this is again on the Senate side, but the, the House is going to be soon to follow as far as what they're doing on this. And so at that point, if it comes out the end of June, the question is, do we take it up before July thirty first? My personal opinion is, with all of what we're doing with the budget, probably not. It will probably be in September or October. But to that point, the sooner we have it, then I have it in the box, ready to file, and I can do a better job of educating myself. We just, the, the numbers are, you know, speak for themselves. I mean, we, I guarantee you, we compete with every regional school system out there. I can't imagine that Silver Lake's geographic area is anywhere near, right? So, I, I, I believe that we can, and we'll just take, take Whitman Hansen, take, you know, take Silver Lake, you take, you know, NOS, Upper Cape Regional, there's so many examples. There's so many examples right around us that I'll be able to make that case and then try to add it into budget, and they'll do the same in the House. So, these are concrete things, and this is why this is important for us to come, because you can help educate us on how to help.
Mr. Costin?
Thank you. Just a couple of points. Ms. Badger and I have worked on some language and some statistics. But it's kind of interesting because we looked at schools like Acton-Boxborough, 30 square miles, Dudley-Charlton, 65, one of the larger ones, Bridgewater-Rainham, 49. Plymouth has 134 square miles. And 37 of that are water that we have to drive around to get to the kids who live on the other side. So, and the other thing is that...
Oh, well, let's ask for that next year's budget. Really?
Remember the Saquish days?
Yeah.
Remember the Saquish days?
I drove a bus to Saquish and back, the three kids, yeah.
The other interesting thing is, and I know you all, you know this, but that the reimbursement rate for regions is 71%. There's a pot of money, $62 million in the state of Massachusetts. And it's just a matter, I think, of, and we'll send you something once, you know, everyone reviews it, that modifying Chapter 71, Section for Regional Reimbursement.
To that point, if you took the model and you added it into the regional school, what would that mean to the town of Plymouth?
There's qualifiers for what's-
I have my shoes on, so I can't count.
For what's reimbursable transportation, you know, within so many miles of the school, et cetera. But I mean, it's safe to say that would be a few million dollars, easily.
So, that's, you know, that's significant, and that's a way to help. And I think, you know, I'm not saying I can get it done, but I think I have, I think we all have a really good argument to make with it. So, you know, we want to focus on that very issue. But it's not the only issue, but it's something we have to do. So, it's charter schools, it's addressing the Mass Health, and this other transportation thing.
We've... Yes, Mr. Penton.
I just want to make kind of an echoing comment, you know, working on coalition. Just want to remind everyone here, you know, feel free always to reach out also to the EAPC, you know? We're always out there. We're not afraid to fight for education. We've fought for the school budget before. We'll do it again. So, anytime, you know, boots on the grounds, knocking on doors, making calls, giving the word out there, you know, always feel, you know, the ability to reach out to us to fight for education because, you know...
We've taken a lot of your time tonight. We know you're very out to so many meetings, but I will give you the last word. Who's going to take it? I'm giving you the last word.
You, or him?
First of all, thank you so much for bringing us here tonight. This is long overdue. It's really important that we do this. I think we should do it a little bit more often as well. That's obviously up to you, but we'll be available anytime you need us. You are on TV, right?
We're live on TV.
Are you going to get a picture? Is there a photo?
Sorry, Kathy, they canceled your shoe.
There's a baby somewhere you can hold.
But no, seriously, this is very important. This is helpful stuff. And this is how we get things done, by getting information from you to get it into the budget. And Tom, great point. Thank you so much. And we will take you up on that as well. But all of us working together, because we are in a unique situation, we just need to make the case together. So, thank you again for having us here.
And to this point, I really do appreciate this school committee, this school department. You know, this really is an amazing school department that we have here. Something I'm very proud of, that we've seen, we've seen, you know, over a period of time, we've seen these two amazing schools go there. There's such... I have not seen in, I've been around for a while, you know, 21 years, I have not seen such collaboration and cooperation from the town and the school system. When I first started, it was a battle between them. But I think, yeah, I mean, we remember.
Yes, I remember that.
And to see what we've seen now, it's, I believe it's because this community has a great deal of respect for the product that is coming out educationally. And yes, it's expensive. A hundred million dollars is a lot of money. But the reality is, is that it is, the product that is coming out is really impressive. And I know a lot of people take a lot of pride in our school system. And you are all on that front line and working day in and day out. And, you know, to Gary, as you all know, I mean, someone I admire greatly and has kind of been at the head of this school system, you've done a phenomenal job. I know the town is very proud of the work that you've done, and you and your team. And I can promise you, anything that I can do to try to assist and help in any way, I promise you I'll do that. So, thank you for giving us this opportunity.
Thank you for being here this evening. We're going to take a little break at this point. Thank you very much. We'll be back in 15 minutes. This meeting back into order. Thank you very much. That was a really good hearing we had. We now have to do a public hearing on school choice. So, at this moment, I'm going to declare the opening of a public... No, let me hear the report on your recommendation first.
Yes. According to Mass General Law, Chapter 76, Section 12B, the school committee, every school committee committing the Commonwealth by June must take up on their agenda the option for every school district to either participate or not participate in school choice. The Plymouth Public Schools, since this Mass General Law was in the written docket for school districts, we have never participated in school choice. Years ago, we were overcrowded. We decided that wasn't a good option for us. As we move forward, our population has dropped. We've noticed that during our population drop, we've added a lot of, a variety of programs that have really helped to meet the needs of our special education population. And we've also noticed that our classroom availability and classroom sizes are somewhat stable in the sense that we have manageable classroom size. In my opinion, if we opened up school choice for the Plymouth Public Schools, we would see a compromise in that. And for that position, Dr. Sorenson and the school committee here tonight, I do not recommend that the Plymouth Public Schools open up enrollment to school choice for this district.
Okay. Do committee members have a question about the superintendent's recommendation? Okay, so at this moment, I'm going to open up a public hearing, and I will announce that the town of Plymouth School Department has made a recommendation that we will not participate in school choice. Is there anybody attending tonight's meeting who would like to speak to the school committee during this public hearing? Seeing no hands, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. Dr. Mestes?
Dr. Sorenson, I will inform the Department of Education that the school committee has voted to not support school choice.
Well, we haven't voted yet, but we will.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
I will take a motion.
I move.
Ms. Burgess moves the recommendation of administration, that is, to not participate in the school choice program. Is there a second? Second, Ms. Badgers, is there a question on that? Okay, we will now vote on that.
I just voted incorrectly, guys.
Mine's not coming up.
Yes, my system's down.
The internet crashed while we were on break, so...
Okay, so we'll take the vote orally then. All those in favor of the motion? And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Sorry. Dr. Campbell's controlling the meeting tonight, so I don't see it. And I didn't think it was an action item because I'm not in control, which is a good thing.
So, you will also notify?
So, I will notify the Department of Education that the Plymouth School Committee has voted to not support school choice for the Plymouth Public Schools.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is to do our beginning preliminary work on the superintendent's evaluation. Dr. Mestes?
Yes, tonight, in your school committee agenda, you have the Massachusetts Department of Secondary and Elementary Education Evaluation Form for the 2019 Superintendent's Evaluation. It's a form that you've all seen before. Keep in mind that this form is to be completed by the committee. Our next school committee, I will report on, have the final report on my goals. This is a little bit later than about... Well, actually, it's not really that much later because typically we...
Typically, we have to rush it through.
We have to rush it through because the potential school committee change. There won't be a change this year, so with that aspect, we have a little bit more time, which actually gives you more availability for time for input as the district moves forward. But I will have a report for you next meeting on the status of my goals, which is a small part of the evaluation. Take a look at the evaluation and the components of it. As you see, there are a lot of pieces to it, and the form is in the agenda tonight for your review and for your input to the chair when the chair is able to compile it based on your input. So, the items are there for your input. My suggestion is that you review this and start collecting information so that you can have that.
Any questions? Ms. Badger?
So, at the next meeting, we'll get the information that you're providing as backup? Is that what you're just...
I will do...
I just was making sure I understood. Okay.
I'll have a report for you on my goals. But what I'll also do is put together, like I typically do every year, a list of all of the events and benchmark opportunities that have happened throughout the year relative to some of the evaluation benchmarks.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, we can move along then.
Ms. Badger has a question.
Ms. Badger?
And so, if we're pushing it out, then it would be in June that we will, the June, first June meeting? I'm just, you know, I just like the schedule.
My plan was, after we hear Dr. Mestes's goals at the next meeting, then I will make a recommendation as to when these documents need to be in.
Okay. Planner, you know.
You don't want to miss that meeting, that's why.
A little more time.
Okay, job descriptions.
Yes, we have four job descriptions tonight. This is the remaining clerical positions in the district. So, the first is the Special Education Office Secretary, which is a 200-day position. This is the individual who works very closely with Mrs. DeRosa, the Assistant Director of Special Education, on all aspects of the out-of-district process. There's a lot of different pieces, especially when students graduate and we merge transcripts and things of that nature. And actually, speaking of the Medicaid process, that's another big piece with third-party billing and things of that nature. So, this individual does work really the school year with additional days on either end of the summer and before school starts. So, that's the Special Education Office 200-day secretary.
Any questions on this one? Ms. Badger?
I just have, I think it's across the, this, maybe it's in another one of these job descriptions or two. And it just says process recognition and for new hires. Is that, does that just go through those secretaries and then into HR?
Correct. They do some paperwork that...
Okay.
They do the interview process, and then it comes over to HR to process the official hire and the contracts and things are in my office. But the initial screenings and things of that nature are there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll take a motion on this one. Ms. Badger?
I move we approve Special Education Secretary 200 hours.
200 days, seconded by...
200 hours.
Seconded by, it won't come up.
You're not there either, okay.
It won't come up. Is there a second? Ms. Burgess has a second. Other questions? Okay, all those in favor? That is unanimous.
Do I vote?
We, do you have?
I just did. But I didn't vote. I just didn't want to make anything up.
Should we go out and in again?
Oh, now it's here.
You can try. It's up to you guys.
All right. Back up.
Try it. Back up. This is the 200. This is the first one.
Yeah, this is the first one. Can you vote?
I just signed out, but I don't know why it's not coming back up.
CINC does it too. Only Kim's.
I just signed out.
Oh.
Oh. Oh.
Good luck, town meeting here.
I know. Now, I'm not even getting in.
All right. Everybody voted in favor. Can we go on to the next one, please?
The next one is a very similar position. It's also in the Special Education Office, but it's really the individual who works directly with Stacy Rogers. And there's many facets to this job from when students graduate and the transitioning of the IEP into electronic file. There's so many different layers. But this is intentionally a 220-day position, but they're very similar in nature because of the overlap within the department, so.
All right. I don't, we're going to have to vote by hand because we're stuck with that screen because Kim never got to vote.
I'm not even getting in, yeah.
So, is there a motion to accept the 220-day job description as presented? Ms. Rassell, you move that? Seconded by Ms. Burgess. Is there a question on the 220-day job description? Okay, we'll take the vote by show of hands. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. And the next one is the Coordinator-Secretary.
Yes, and this we merged. We had prior to very outdated job descriptions for the Academic Coordinator-Secretary and then the Visual Performing Arts. So, we merged them all into a Coordinator-Secretary. So, there's, because they don't each have one personal, there's a lot of sharing within the department. So, this is brand-new as a title in this area, removing the different specific layers, kind of like we did with the Academic Coach. And this is working within their offices, a lot of the, from the Science Fair to the National History Day to bringing candidates in, book representatives, a lot of different factors, so.
Okay. Any questions on it? I'll take a motion. Ms. Burgess moves the recommendation on this one, seconded by Mrs. Badger. Ms. Badger, is there any questions on this? Okay, we can vote this one, I believe. Electron, I think.
I can't.
I'm in, but I can't vote.
It'll come up now. All right, it's not coming up. So, we'll take it by show of hands. All those in favor?
Mine came up.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Yours came up too.
Yes. In the final one, the Technology Repair and Services, this is a position that has been merged into one role, working very closely with Allen McLean's office and the inventorying equipment, as well as the school due database system and many different aspects of our technology. And also, a big new part of this job is the distribution of technology for the MCAS testing. So, the tracking of that and ensuring that the buildings have their, what their needs are for the technicians who work on that. So, this individual is also a 220-day employee. So, they tag every piece of equipment. There's a lot of layers to it as well.
Okay. Are there any questions? We'll take a motion. Mr. Morgan?
I'll make a motion and approve the job description.
Thank you. Seconded by Ms. Haywood. Question on the motion? Okay. By show of hands, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
And I think just to close on those, we have, it's been three years, but we've completed, Tom and I are going to miss each other. We've completed all the EAPC job descriptions, parers, teachers, counselors, psychs, clerical. And we're in the process, just so you folks know, of moving outdated ones that haven't been updated. They're on electronic school boards, so they're all on the HR website. So, we're hoping to start with Cobra in the fall. We're going to take the summer off of job descriptions and focus on hiring. And then we'll start with the Cobra ones, which are very outdated as well. But we do have some that will just be moved over that are in the 2000s, like the superintendent's job description. So, we're, that's our next tier to it. But I do want to thank the EAPC because they've sat every Tuesday for an hour and a half for three years, so.
Huge undertaking.
Helpful, so it was great.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Badger?
Is there, like, are we putting something into place? And it sounds like we are, so that we don't ever have a 1991, like, job description in 2019.
Yes, I got to get them all, yeah. We have Cobra, are mainly 1992, so I graduated from college in 1994, so it was going to get there.
I was in elementary school. Come on, really?
So we're going to try. Yeah, we have a system, and I think we've, we've been very collaborative about when a new, some new positions crop up, event liaisons have cropped up, different things we're going to try to be ahead of the curve with that.
And just like put them on like a three-year rotation or something.
Yeah, we have a big document, and a lot of pieces, but I like projects, so it's good.
Thank you.
Do you have everything printed out?
For what?
I just wanted to forget the warrant, I can't pull it up.
Okay, reports and proposals from committee members. Ms. Hunt?
Just, just a couple of things. I know that Dr. Maestas had talked about the Law Day with the free speech, and I don't, I don't remember you saying a whole lot about you receiving that award, so I wanted to congratulate you on the, I don't know, it's the Terry Murray Award, right?
Yeah, right.
So we were all very happy to be there and be, be so proud of you and everything that you're doing, and congratulations again on that.
So much.
I know Ms. Badger and I had a chance to go see Anything Goes, it was awesome, just as usual. I think we expect so much now when we go to these events and we get what we are expecting, so that was fun. I had a chance to do the Senior Showcase for North, and that was amazing, and Ms. Sylvia did a, Sylvia did a great job. She kind of, what I liked at the very end is she kind of pulled all the kids around her and told her, you know, how amazing they are, and that this is, you know, like, the last day of their, their last big event of their high, high school in these areas, and to go out and do great things. And it was, it was really awesome to see how, in just that short a time that she's been here, how connected she is now in Plymouth and with the kids, and how she really takes ownership for, for their success, which was really, you know, heartwarming to say. And then the last thing is, this week is Teacher Appreciation Week.
That's right.
I know that some schools might celebrate at different times due to schedules, but this is the official week, and I just wanted to let all the teachers out there know how much I appreciate them, and I'm sure we all do. I know every year, since my kids were little, I, I send a personal email to every teacher. It's bittersweet for me, this is my last one, I'm going to cry, but, you know, I'll be, that's all I'll be doing tonight. But I just wanted to let everybody know that, you know, that we really appreciate it, and we do what they do, we do what we do for them and the students. And, you know, it's, it's sad that we've only got one week out of the year that we really go out of our way to thank them, so I just wanted to publicly announce that.
Ms. Haywood?
And also appreciating the teachers, I also want to, this is also National Nurses Week as well. So I want to send my appreciation to those nurses that work for our district, and-
Yes.
And their teachers.
And the teachers.
No, they are teachers.
Yes, yeah, nurse educators, so, that work for the district, and everything they do, even in this environment of mounting responsibilities, so thank you.
Ms. Badger?
Did you want us to do our conference?
Oh, gosh, that was supposed to be on tonight's agenda, so I'm going to have to move it.
Okay, so that's totally fine. I just also wanted to mention that Ms. Haywood and I went to the Self-Biomedical Senior Night, and it was so nice to have seen the program in the beginning and to see these students now, like, what they've accomplished and what they're interested in doing, and it was just, it was really awesome to see it from, with these first kids who got the opportunity to go through the program.
That's real good.
It was awesome.
Ms. Burgess?
Yeah, I went to Law Day as well, and North, I went to the, well, it was both schools acapella time, and also I went to the North Senior Showcase, the Senior Projects Showcase. We've got a lot coming up.
A lot.
We'll be running.
Proposals. Some of us were able to go to the selectments meeting a couple of weeks ago on Tuesday night.
Oh, that's right, I forgot that.
Did you speak up to that?
No, I didn't speak up to it, but I went.
Yes. And there was a follow-up information that you sent us.
Yes, yeah, I sent a follow-up information that JC actually broke her own school record in the 100 hurdles, which, she's a fantastic athlete, and I imagine, her season's not over yet for outdoor track, so her national championship was indoor track. So we'll see how things work out for her moving forward.
And I was able to attend at the No Place For Hate concert on Saturday night, which was a really super-nice play, super-nice group to be with. I thought that was really nice.
That's great.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, anything else from proposals and proposals? All right, moving along then, is there a report on PYDC this evening?
I didn't bring a written report, but I know, I know what happened really. The season's really gearing up for the stickers on the coolers at the liquor stores. We have 20 now, with all of them now, 20 liquor stores in Plymouth. I went to two of them, and both of them are going to take it, so that's a good thing. And so many things are going on now with the, well, they had all the posters, the pictures, what are they called?
Photo Voice?
Yeah, Photo Voice, because they were, I tried to get to that, but I couldn't get to that one. At PCIS, they had, yeah, the thing that evening, Monday evening. And, but, everything's coming along this, this weekend, this Wednesday, there's Taylor's Message, it's at the Spire, and that's from 6:00 to 7:30, and hopefully, a lot of parents and some students go to that. It's, it's furry, so, and it should be able to get some packing downtown on Wednesday, hopefully. Okay. I guess that's where I'm going to leave it right now, unless you have something to add? Do you have anything?
No, I think you've mentioned the, the major events for the meeting.
Things that are right now, yeah.
Yes, thank you, Angie.
Okay, on to the building committee. Was there a meeting?
I couldn't go.
Morgan?
No, the next meeting is actually this Thursday.
Yeah, it's this Thursday.
Personnel?
Yes, we have three classified appointments to report, five short-term maternity leaves, and four resignations.
Okay, thank you for that report. Any questions on the personnel report?
You can either.